Meeting called to order today is Tuesday, April 12th. It is now 6:35 PM. Town Council having a public hearing at 11:70 Main Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island, 02893.
Councilman Tucker?
Here.
Councilman Kenahan?
Here.
Councilman Padula?
Here.
Council Vice President Giroux?
Here.
Council President Goslin?
Here.
There is a quorum. Public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 17, July 1, 2016 through June 31, 2017 municipal budget.
Okay. Any updates on the budget? Fred, John? I know you were gonna work on the possible tax rate, or Fanny? Have that to us.
I'll give Fred a chance to hand that out. Per some of the previous requests or discussions, what we did was, we tried to incorporate, again, just as a draft of discussion with the council, the idea of moving to a two-family owner-occupied rate separate from the residential. So you will see that there is a separate rate now for that, which is the 2973 as indicated on this particular schedule. And you can see that that does represent an increase to that rate for that particular group. We did look at some of the other codes to see if we possibly could either maintain or lower some of the other rates and basically, based on the assessments that we did have recently received from the revaluation company, we are able to decrease the single rate by 1% as indicated on the schedule, potentially go with an increase to our creation of that second code for the owner-occupied two-family, and maintain the rates, the current tax rates on the other codes as indicated on the schedule. I did look at some numbers to see what the average would be, or average increase potentially could be, or reduction in the case of the residential. And the 1% reduction to the residential could result in probably about $40 to $50 a year by a 1% reduction, which is not significant, but it's not an increase. And on the two-family, that's an approximate $400 to $500 increase to the owner-occupied two-family houses, just to give you some information for the year.
So basically, right now, I saw the email that was sent, I didn't want to respond. We're talking 500 in some odd single, owner-occupied two-family homes that would possibly see a 14%, 14.5% tax increase. And if we left the single-family rate where it was, what effect would that have on us?
Well, I do, the schedule that I did hand out does have the ability to run scenarios, run different scenarios, so I actually brought the computer for just that reason. So there are a lot of different combinations of rates and so forth that we could actually do, but we were trying to just have something that would, you know, potentially be for discussion. One of the things that was previously mentioned was maybe splitting that rate in between the multi-unit and the single, but if you were to do that, it would have been a significantly higher increase than the 14%. So there are a lot of other scenarios that we could potentially run.
So, John, let me just turn. So, did you just like back into these figures? Is that how you did it?
No. Basically, what we do is, we have the net assessed values for each of the, each of the codes or each of the groups.
Okay.
We have what the previous rates were. So if we were to keep the rates all the same, we know what the levy increase would have been, but we tried to make some changes to the rates per some of the requests.
Have you done different scenarios? And I've got one here on a database, where, I mean, you start off with 50/50. I mean, the premise is that half of it is for, is a single family.
Right.
Half of it is, is commercial, basically, all right? To make, you know, you could argue that they don't make any money, but the idea is that it helps defray the cost of the property. Have you tried like, you know, and that would be fairly significant, and I don't think it would be fair.
Mm-hmm.
All in one shot.
Right.
Might have to be, it might be fair, but it would have to be, I think, instituted over a period of time. But, and I haven't had a chance to do it yet, but then I'm starting to play with, and I've got the database where you can, you know, plug in the different numbers, the what-ifs.
Right.
And maybe like start to back off, like instead of 50/50, it's 40/60.
Right.
You know, 35, 55, that type of thing.
Right.
To arrive at something, you know, that would be fair for the multifamily owner. Right now, I mean, the reason why we're discussing this is because when you, really when you consider it, it's really not fair. The single families are subsidizing people that have rental income.
But, Councilman, based off just my assessment, I don't know what everybody else's assessment in here, okay? But I can tell you that based off these tax rates, I'm gonna see almost a $700 increase on my single-family home, which, by the way, would be no tax increase this year, but I'm gonna see a $700 a year increase there. I'm gonna pay $6,900.
How are you paying, how are you seeing that?
Because I took the 2570 times my valuation of 270.
Yeah, but that's not how it's done.
That's exactly how it's done.
What do you mean?
You take the assessment, divide by 1,000, multiply by the tax rate. So, yeah, in your case, it may actually be.
So I'm gonna go from $6,200 a year to $6,900 a year, and then doing what you wanna do.
Oh, wait, 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 not what I wanna do.
Well, what you've, what you've suggested.
The consensus here, I mean, I haven't heard anybody other than yourself really be against this, or say that it's not fair to do it this way.
But I'm also throwing this out there, that you're looking at $700 increase on my single-family and a $467 increase on my two-family, I'm seeing a $1,200 increase in one year based upon these numbers.
Right, and I think we've, I think I've already established that this wouldn't be acceptable. So what is acceptable to you?
Well, the question is...
Do you, do you, do you agree with the premise? Do you agree with the premise? Let's start right at the baseline. Do you agree with the premise, all right, that the single families are really subsidizing owner-occupied two-family, which they, typically, the second unit is rented out?
I think every tax rate is subsidized, and if I'm gonna say that, I'm not gonna say the single family...
All right, so you don't agree with the premise?
With, with you saying single-family is subsidizing?
Yeah.
If you look at your neighboring towns like Coventry and West Warwick, they don't have this tiered tax system. So I'm gonna say that three-family, four-family, six-family, and businesses are also compensating the single family and the two-family.
And that's, and that's good segue into what I'm gonna propose in the future. It's too late now, but we need another tax commission. We need another, another group of people that can study this rate, because I've been looking at the rates all around the state, and these rates are terrible. We've gotta do something to correct these rates. It's too late now, but right now, we can begin to do something. And what you, this is, this is where you started, John.
Yeah, again, just to try to have some...
You can do a what-if, so that instead of 14.52, you know, that's crazy, although this council didn't have any problem increasing, you know, six-family to 25% one year. But the fact is, for residential like this, 14% is crazy. But I think we need to go, and I think it was David Kenahan that said that we have to phase this in.
Right.
All right? And I agree, we have to phase it in. But I don't wanna spin my wheels or waste my time if the majority of the council doesn't wanna do anything.
And I did look at, you know, meeting at the halfway point, and the halfway point was gonna mean that that number, instead of 14.5% was gonna be closer to like 22%, which is why I said, well, you know what? Again, we're having the discussion, wanna give you the information, we have the way we can run scenarios. So I said, okay, well, if we did a third of the way, rather than half, and that's what this basically represents.
So the 2973, I was at, one of the questions I was gonna ask about 2973 was, I wasn't arbitrary. So that sort of suggests a three-year phase-in period, assuming that that was to continue...
If, if it was going to go to the full rate of the six-family, or the six, or more units, or, or three or more units, I'm sorry.
Wait, for two-family owner-occupied?
Yes.
That's not what Councilman Giroux proposed?
Two-family owner-occupied.
Was to be right in the middle of single.
Right, I'm sorry, okay, I misspoke on that.
Yeah, that, I mean, I was proposing initially, it'd start off 50/50.
You are in the middle.
He might be, he might be in the middle. And I, and I think doing it on here with the, I wish I could put it on the screen over here if you guys. I think what we need to do now is back down from 50/50 to maybe, you know, try, let's try 45, you know, 40/60, that type of thing, and see, at least it, you know, show a distinction. A two-family owner-occupied is not the same thing as a single-family, and it shouldn't be taxed the same way.
What is, John, I don't see it here. What is the rate of the property owners that don't live in town?
The fam, two-family nano, non-owner-occupied rate is 3727.
Oh, 3710 to actual...
Oh, 37, oh, 3727.
Well, that's proposed. Your actual rate is 3710 right now.
That's...
You gotta go below, further down, further down the list.
That's owners that don't live in town.
And that's, that's the goal I was trying to do, is get between, you'll get the single, get something between the single and that rate.
I'm not saying that. How many properties, how many properties are owned in town that they actually don't live in town? Out of state, out of, out of town? I mean, what are we charging?
I don't know that number off the top of my head. Christine is actually in...
But you wouldn't know that.
Why not?
A single family, how do you know that they're not renting it? That's, that gets priced out as a single family tax rate. You wouldn't know. You wouldn't know somebody unless you wanted to go through, you know, the tax rate and see...
How hard would that be on the computer?
I could own, I could own my son's house in Coventry. You know, you wouldn't know unless you checked all the records individually, right? I know, I know what you're trying to get at, but I don't, I don't think there's any way to find out.
Is this really a three-year?
But we do know how many, we do know how many people...
I didn't hear what you said.
How many non-owner-occupied houses, two-families there are, but not single-family.
John, but I mean, why should an out-of-towner get the same rate as a person living in this town, paying taxes in this town, supporting this town? Why should they be paying the same rate? Like, there's a lot of properties that are owned in...
The Supreme Court says that...
That's, that's my guess, yeah.
You can't, you can't charge a different rate by where the property owner lives.
But I think Angelo's saying, right now, we do charge non-owner-occupied.
Exactly.
And, no, it doesn't matter where they live.
Doesn't matter where they live.
But not, I think, basically, he said non-owner-occupied should be more money than an owner-occupied, because the owner-occupied obviously should be taking more care of their property because they're on-site. Second, they are spending more time in the community than an out-of-town landlord.
And if you went just, if you went 50% of the value as a regular single-family tax rate, and then the other half as, as rental, non-owner-occupied, then that would be fair, but I don't think it would be right all at once.
So, John, right, right now...
Yeah, have to be phased in.
Which, it's 2596 for a single, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And where is two-family, non-owner-occupied?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
That is...
3727?
3727.
So the midpoint of those two is 3159, correct?
Sounds about right, yes.
Okay. You have it going up to 29, that doesn't seem like a three-year phase-in to me, that seems...
It's one-third, if I calculated correctly, it was one-third of the, of the increase to get it up to that full amount.
'Cause we'd be talking about raising it essentially just under $6, but right now you have it going up $4.
No, it's... 3727 versus 2596 that it's currently at right now is approximately $11 and change. So if you divided that over a three-year phase-in, it'd be about $3 and change per year, which is what I did.
But we don't want, we don't want owner-occupied to go up to 3727.
That's what it currently is at, non-owner-occupied.
I mean, owner-occupied.
Gotcha.
The goal is to get owner-occupied up to 31.
31, okay.
59.
Then, I can make the change.
They should get a break on at least half.
Yeah, I agree with you.
So we're talking, so we're talking about a $6 gain, so if you were to do a three-year phase-in, it would be $2 per year. Right now, you have it at essentially $4.
Right.
So it's half of that.
Yeah, again, what I, what I was doing was looking at the non-owner, two-family, non-owner-occupied, and that's what I believe, I don't know if they actually...
Yeah, I understand.
Okay. Just give me a second, let me see what I can do to come up with a number to your question.
Yeah.
Owner-occupied is too low.
Which looks to me more like a 7% increase as opposed to the 14.52.
Or rental property, which is commercial.
Well, I just want, even going back to that phase-in that John brought up, and again, because I am an owner of a two-family property, I'm not, I'm just throwing this out because I know the numbers of that property. I don't know the numbers of every two-family in West Warwick, but I can tell you that the two-family I have isn't appraised at a high amount. I think it's appraised at 140 or 142. And if you phased that in, right now, my taxes, and I'm just throwing this out there, 3,600 and change.
But he doesn't live in it.
And if you phase it all in after three years, or four years, however many times you wanna phase it, it goes up to $5,200 for an owner-occupied two-family.
But it wouldn't, I mean, it wouldn't affect you, David, because you don't live in that, do you?
I'm gonna tell you, Ed, I can't get $5,200 a year in taxes for that property. I'm, I'm just telling you now. It's, it's non-feasible. 7,000, and even look at my single-family right next door, it's $7,000 a year.
All right, so say...
I mean, you're forced, I'll be honest, you'd force me to move out of this town.
All right, so, again, I don't understand how it affects you.
Well, he's gonna, he's, he has a...
You gotta, you gotta raise the rents to that, Ed. You can't get the rents to go that high.
Well, I mean, the three-family I owned, my income was $3,300 a month, and my taxes were $4,800 a year. That was before I sold it, and then I took the property back. So you figured your rents, your, your, your taxes, your insurance, one and a half went to the, for the expenses. The other one and a half, I made a business out of it. So, I mean, a person...
And that's a three-family, you can't do that with a two-family.
Okay, so, so say, so every, does everybody agree then, there's gotta be some type of split, at least initially, not the whole amount 50/50? But, so what's, in your mind, what's fair? I mean, if we split it right now initially, if we said then, say, 70% of the value, assessed value of that property will get the lower rate, but 30% will get the commercial rate, like every other two-family, non-owner-occupied. Would that be fair to start at that? Right now, I've got 50/50, and you can take a look at these, and the increases would be, would not be fair for, for the people all at once. It'd be crazy.
You know, Ed, I, I agree, and I...
So what percentage?
Stop me if, if I'm misunderstanding you. I understand if you, if you own a two-family house and you're living that home, I'm paying 37, what am I paying?
2596, is that...
No.
Yeah, you're paying with a, right now, you're paying with a single family.
2596, you're paying single-family, same thing as a single-family house is paying.
Right. And you're making money on that rental.
Right.
So I agree with you, they shouldn't be in the same category as a person that just lives in their residential property without making any money on that property.
Yeah, they're not getting a break, because they don't have any rental.
I understand to give the people that live in the home all by themselves a better break than a person making money at it.
Yeah. Okay, so now, what percentage? We're not gonna do 50/50, because 50/50 is outrageous. All right? A person that, let's see here, whose old tax was, say, 3,900 would go up to about $861. And I've got everybody here, all the, all the 580, 530 people that are living in two-families, they own it and they live in it. It's 530 units, according to the latest tax rule. All right, so they're all in here, and, and I plugged the formula in, so it's split right down the middle, I would take 50% of the assessed value and tax it at the single-family, 50% at the two-family, okay? All right, so maybe that's not, that's not right. Maybe we should bump it up to 70/30 to begin with, but again, what would be fair? If a person's tax rate is now 4,000 on a two-family owner-occupied, if it went up $200, is that manageable? $300, what's, you know, what's the baseline, guys?
Let's hear what John wants to say.
Or not do it at all?
I did take a look at the numbers like you suggested and adjust the rate for my error on the other rate. And if we were to increase the, or create a new rate for the owner-occupied two-family, and increase it approximately $2 per 1,000, that would be an increase to the average home of about, a little less than $300 per year, and that would be one-third of the way to the point of the higher rate of the 3154. But however, keep in mind, whenever you do any type of adjustment to that, because we have all these different rates and when we need to meet a levy, we have to adjust something else.
I understand that, but, but why don't you take, what's wrong with taking the approach of taking the current assessed value and weighing it? What's wrong with that approach?
The system will not allow it. Christine can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe in the conversation that Christine and I had after last public hearing, the system does not have that ability to take one particular parcel and split it, and have two different tax rates and two different assessments. So you'd have to actually do that by means of changing the rate versus dealing with the assessment itself. As it is, we have so many, the system has limitations on the number of rates you can have, because we are one of the few communities that have this many rates.
Yeah.
Typically, there's only, you know, maybe two or three, if that, so we actually have to shift some, or one of the other codes into a different category in order to create this other layer for the owner-occupied two-family house.
I never thought I'd see the day that your taxes are higher per month than your mortgage.
Well, we're fifth highest for a reason. Fifth highest in the state, and we keep, we keep raising the taxes. And if you're not raising the taxes, we're only doing a reevaluation where, where your property's worth more than what they, there's a 17% decrease in properties across the Northeast, and, and by our evaluator that came to evaluate our homes, we get a 10% whack. So, I mean, I don't know where, where he's talking about, so, I mean, I don't see how my home went up $40,000. When the neighbors across me, Boucher, sold their house for $190,000, the Falco sold their house for $220,000. So where do you figure your house is worth in 380, 360, in that, in that vicinity?
Oh, a lot of people are gonna be shell-shocked.
Yeah, they don't realize until they get their tax bill. That's when the phones are gonna go off.
Because you're introducing, you're introducing...
And we're gonna get the calls.
Well, here in this, on this piece of paper I received tonight, you're, you're introducing a 26-cent decrease in your single-family home, but after your, most houses are probably going up, from what I've seen, and...
Substantially. Big time.
So you're seeing a $700, like, I'm personally gonna see a $700 tax increase, you know, from 62 to 69.
At that 2570 rate.
Yeah, depending on the assessed...
If I went to 2596, I'd even be higher.
Yeah, it all depends on the evaluation.
Right. Okay, if you look at the average, compare it...
Did yours last year go down, 300?
No. I had to fight, I had to bring, had to appeal it and show to get $17,000 off in evaluation. I had to compare it to 30 other houses in the town of West Warwick.
I mean, we do, we do still have some time to, you know, set the rate before the financial town meeting. We do have to have something to the state for their review to make sure that we're not exceeding the 4% levy cap. So it is a situation where if you can, you know, give me some scenarios you'd like to see, I can, I can run them, provide them to the council, and then we do need to have another council meeting prior to the first week of May, which we have a public hearing scheduled for wastewater anyways. We do have to have another meeting and allow an opportunity for the council to say, yes, this is the budget document that we want for the financial town meeting and for the vote, which we are going to suggest that we do on the 26th of April. That is when we'd have to have the decision on what this will be. So there is still some time to, to run scenarios and give some other schedules that you may be able to look at. I mean, at this point, we presented this, or I presented this tonight, just for discussion only, because of the, based on some of the conversations. I do apologize, I had that incorrect, you know, escalator, but...
And what a lot of people don't understand, and you can correct me anytime, John, we got a five-year plan. Supposedly, the tax increases over the five years was gonna be a 20% hit to the community.
Yeah, about 4% a year.
Okay.
And we're gonna go lower than that.
So you're looking at 20% tax increase, maybe 18, whatever that is. But what the people aren't understanding, they think we're out of that mess with that five-year plan. The next five years, it's another 20% tax increase. So now, you're looking at a 40% tax increase, we're working our way right up to first place in the tax rates.
Well, we don't, we, honestly, we don't know what the next five years, if it'll have to be that same 4% per year.
More state aid.
More state aid, you know, the pension, depending on how the pension system does.
You're gonna get more state aid, yep.
Credit rating, credit rating and the bond, you know, the bond rate that we have that we can borrow, there's a lot of factors.
There's the schools that need a million extra a year. You got this that needs an extra $30,000. You got this that you need another $80,000. I mean, I'm not...
The province that needs another $175 million.
What's that?
You got province that needs another $175 million.
They're not the only ones, they're showing it on paper.
How come the state's not rushing in there like they were in West Warwick when we had a problem with that shit?
And the plan, what she refused to, to tell the community was, it's not a five-year tax increase where we're gonna get rid of all our problems. We're still in the same position we were, you're kicking the can down the road, and the taxpayers and the business people in this town are gonna get whacked 40% in 10 years. Someday, Padula was right, remember that.
Yeah.
I agree with Angelo that you're never gonna see that state again.
Of course not.
I think that this state will ever put us back to where we were 2007, before they started mentioning those companies.
They have, they're gonna have to do something, because the municipalities, more and more, are in trouble.
They're in trouble themselves, you think they're gonna bail us out?
Well, that's, that's true.
Gonna keep hiring people out of state for $250,000 a year.
Well, the answer, I mean, you know, the answer, right now, we told the people, and they voted for it, that we anticipated about a 4% increase every single year. If we can stay under that, then it's even better than the, they had hoped for, because they voted overwhelmingly for the five-year plan.
How many people voted in that, in that budget?
Well, that doesn't...
Come on, 900, yes it does, 900 out of 17,000.
That's a 400 to 500 increase from what it used to be.
Right, yeah.
I mean, you know, you can't talk on both sides of your mouth, and one, one...
I'm not, that's why, that's why I don't vote for the budget.
You press, you press hard for the people to vote for the budget, and then on the other side of your mouth, you say, oh, it's no good, only a few people vote for it. Well, then, why you have it? Let the people that were elected decide then, you know? Which I'm not saying I'm in favor of, but it's something to talk about. All right, so I'd like to give you some different scenarios over here.
Sure.
And maybe even, you look at this, I understand, only because of the limitations of a computer program, you can't do this. And I'll weigh it, so, you know, 40% is for single-family rate, 60%. You could put it on a spreadsheet and look at it, and then maybe get a blended amount for a percentage and get close to it. All right, so this one, and I'll gladly give you this, this is the latest rule that I've gotten from Christine. And, you know, you're using Access here, and I give it to anybody, actually, anybody that wants it can, can have it. And I'll show you, you know, how to, simply in like 10 seconds, how to change the, you know, the percentages, and we can take a look at it. I agree with, with David, I mean, as it is right now, there's, there's no way, that's, that's not fair to the people.
You're giving them a big whack.
Yeah, no, we can't do that. I, I think we have to bump it up a little bit to be, start to go in the right direction Yeah, no, we can't do that. I, I think we have to bump it up a little bit to be, start to, to go in the right direction, so it's equitable for the, uh, um, the single family households, which there are.
That number wasn't given to. How many single families were there? That wasn't in the email.
Uh, fifty eight oh eight, five thousand eight hundred eight. And the two family owner occupied, there is fi- uh, five hundred and thirty. Uh, nine hundred and sixteen million in total assessed value for the single family compared to seventy seven point three million for the two family owner occupied. It's, you know, it's, I, I think everybody agrees so far that it's gotta be brought up to be equitable, but it, it, we can't bring it up all at once, and I agree, we can't. Uh, we've got to be fair about this. All right, so the next issue, I'm done, this one, next one is the senior.
Yeah, in terms, in terms of the scenarios though, if you could please just let me know what scenarios, you know, you do want me to, you know, do you wanna run? Or if it's something that you wanna, you know, sit down with, with a couple of council members, wanna sit down with Christine and I, we can, you know, discuss some of options.
The big question, and I guess this kinda goes back to Ed is philosophically, do you believe it should be fifty fifty right in the middle of single and right in the middle of two family non-owner occupied? If that's what you believe, then the only question is a phase in process. If you think that it shouldn't be fifty fifty, if you think that it should be sixty forty for whatever logical reason, then you can still talk about a phase in process. But the question is, where do you see this someday going, or where do you feel comfortable with this sitting logically?
If, if you're asking me, I, I think, um, minimally, I, I, I think the people that are living in a two family, there are good reasons to give them a little bit, uh, extra, because they're living there and theoretically, they take better care of their property, uh, they're living here in West Wallack, participating in the community. Um, so, but, but I, I would say we start at fifty fifty. They're living in there, half, half of the, the value is, is for their own, probably more, more, more the value, they probably, you know, their part of the two family probably is a little bit nicer than the rental, you know? But I would say fifty fifty is.
Okay. So.
Makes sense.
So the difference there is six dollars effectively from twenty five to thirty one.
Yep.
And every, um, every dollar represents approximately one hundred and fifty dollars on the median house. So every dollar you wanna raise it is approximately a hundred and fifty dollars that the median person's gonna see their tax bill go up. So if you think that three hundred is way too much, then maybe go down to one dollar up, and that would be a hundred and fifty additional. So that's kind of the, I think the way we're gonna have to approach this is how many years? Do you wanna phase it in six years, a dollar per year, or do you wanna phase it over three years, two dollars per year? That's kinda where we have to go with this, I think.
I, I mean, a- again, I, the, the bottom line is that I do think they should be getting owner occupied some type of financial benefit for living in this commercial piece of property.
I'd be more in line for the dollar a year.
Yeah, that would mean, that would mean the median two family owner occupied would see about a hundred and fifty dollars, because they sit somewhere around a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars assessed.
On the, the median, again?
Median, median, yeah. Okay. And Ed, just, just to tie a bow on this, um, logically, you would like to see that the savings go to the single family rate, because that's the only place I would want to see the savings go, because I feel like the single family rate, the single family houses have gotten hit so much over the past.
Well, no, I, I, I think the reason why I think that, I mean, we could put it in the general fund, you know, but, you know, tax it and spend it, I don't wanna do that. I, I wanna give a little tax relief, and it is a little tax relief, to the single family.
Yeah.
Um, because they are definitely helping to subsidize the two family owner occupied.
We might see that it's only a quarter of a percent, like your paper says one, but if you go back and make it just a buck, that might be a quarter of a percent, that's what it is.
The spread between the owner occupied proposed rates, the spread between the owner occupied and the single family is almost twelve dollars. Now, you said six before, it's almost twelve dollars.
Because you want it to be in the middle. You want it to be right in the middle of the two. That's why it's six dollars.
Single family, what are you talking about, twenty five and ninety?
Yeah, it's, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying the rate, I don't know if the rate would be in the middle, what I'm saying is that the, you should apply each rate, weigh it with the assessed value of the property. If it's worth two hundred thousand, and you're gonna assess it fifty fifty, then a hundred thousand would be assessed at the lower rate, a hundred thousand would be assessed at the higher rate. I mean, you know.
Yep.
Then, then you're, then you're, you're fairly taxing it.
Yep.
I think, you know, give me some argument where that's not the case.
I think, I, I can agree with that.
Yeah. But, but at that though, David, it's high, it's too high, it's still too high. It's gonna be a phase in.
No, but again, I, I could see you, but I don't know how much work that is for Donald Stays, but to figure out that's fifty percent, single family fifty percent, two family.
It's the same mathematical principle, making the rate in the middle.
It's right here.
See the Palms, old tax rate, new tax rate? Here's the difference with these five hundred and eighty people, the difference that we pay. Pretty hefty, huh? Let's go up to, if you wanna see somewhere. So you add it all by addresses?
Yeah, and that's easy, once you have the database, which is, you know, public information, everybody wants to play with it out there. Let me know, I'll give you this database too.
In, in terms of the savings that you, or the reduction you'd like to see in the rate for the single family or the, or the primary, what percentage as a whole, you know, what percentage does the council feel that they'd like to see a reduction in that particular?
I don't think there's a goal.
This one doesn't have.
I just think.
Well, cause there is, there are, there are some options, um, you know, some of the other rates right now, as, as it's indicated there, it's keeping some of the other rates the same. There is an opportunity to maybe, you know, fluctuate some of those other rates by a few cents here and there that could potentially lead to more savings if there's a target number that you're looking to achieve on the residential or the primary. Cause we have all these different, you know, different rates, so there are different factors involved with it.
Yeah.
Again, I'm not trying to overcomplicate it, but I'm also trying to, you know, reach the target that, you know.
And overwhelmingly the largest groups.
Right.
Therefore, it changes, the other ones are gonna have a minimal.
It takes massive effects of those to get minimal effects on the single family.
Anything, anything we, we save on doing this, adjusting the two family owner occupied, I would be completely against us putting it on the general fund and spending.
No, no. No, no.
We put it to our tax reduced for the single family owners.
Right, okay. So there's not a target for that, it's just whatever savings shifted to that, okay?
Five thousand eight hundred and eight of them.
Yeah.
According to the tax law.
Okay.
All right, um, obviously there's any further discussion on that matter. Ed, you have another?
I just wanna say one other thing, though. I really think after this, after we do the budget, I really think we should consider again, we haven't done it in a long time. All right, uh, some type of, um, tax rate, tax commission, we've done it before many years ago, to get together and really study this thing, what are the other communities are doing, the different rates that they're doing, whether what we're doing is equitable or not. I know it can't be exactly the same as all the other, of the other, uh, communities, because their base is different. Uh, but, you know, you know, first of all, we've got too many tax rates.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Anybody that's in the business will tell you that, right? And, and I think we need to look at it again, unbiased, nonpartisan, come in and look at it and, and see if it needs adjusting, rather than, you know, in an hour or two, you know, decide if it needs adjusting. All right, that's all I got on that. Second thing?
You got another matter?
Yeah, I do, yep. I brought this up again before, uh, senior center exemptions, we talked about exemptions before, and that's senior center, senior, uh, exemptions when you, once you turn sixty five. Uh, full disclosure, I'm turning sixty five this month. But, um, you know, looking at other communities, what we give the seniors, how we take care of the seniors on their taxes, on just what we spent on the seniors, we've done much better the last couple of years on the senior center and all that. But looking at the tax exemptions, right now, West Wallack offers a hundred and seventy dollars off your tax rate. Just go around to the different communities, um, you know, I just pull out a few, I didn't have a lot of time today to do it, but I pull out a few. Uh, Coventry, for instance, offers nine thousand, I think their tax rate is, uh, what it was. Um, and they have a freeze, nine thousand off there, odds is equivalent, Christine, are you here? Where, where's, no, what's ours equivalent to the, uh, hundred and seventy? How many thousands of dollars off the assessment? Fifty eight hundred, maybe? I, I don't know, that's that number.
Yeah, depending on what type of household we're looking at.
Six hundred, it's six thousand five hundred and forty eight dollars.
Okay. Okay, so that's what we're offering off the assessed value. All right, Coventry offers nine thousand, and they have the freeze. North Providence offers ten thousand. Wallack offers, not quite sure, I, I've got two answers on the phone today from them. Uh, I think it's either ten or twelve thousand, and then one said it was four hundred and fifteen dollars flat rate, but that doesn't match up with what they have on their, on their internet. I think it's about twelve thousand. Let's see here, um, Cranston, uh, does five hundred and thirty six dollars. All right, and we're doing a hundred and seventy. Uh, they actually take twenty three thousand nine hundred dollars off of their, um, their assessed value. So just surrounding us, terrible, terrible shape. Uh, we're not helping out the seniors. Um, I'm not proposing a freeze, I'm not proposing, uh, I am proposing, uh, an increase in the hundred and seventy dollars, flat rate. Um, I like to double it, but I can't say that would be irresponsible to say that unless I have some numbers, I mean, to see how it affects everything else. Uh, and our seniors right now, uh, it's, uh, state code R one, we've got, um, sixteen hundred and sixty seven uh, seniors that are, are taking this deduction, okay? Which is basically on tax money, uh, it's, uh, an expense of two hundred and eighty three thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. Christine, I'll give you this, if you wanna verify, it's right off of your, your two fifteen rules you gave me, I don't have the.
In the email, I also calculated that as one of the best.
Oh, good, okay, so we're right on target, good, okay. Um, we're also gonna talk about veterans too. Veterans, that, that, uh, uh, tax exemption is costing us a hundred and forty four thousand five hundred. But getting back to the seniors, that's, uh, we're crediting, uh, almost eleven million dollars, uh, in assessment for the seniors when they turn sixty five. And that's what, a hundred and seventy dollars. So I would think with simple math, if we doubled it, it, it's gonna cost us an additional two hundred and eighty three thousand dollars. Whether we can afford that in this tax rate, I'm not suggesting this to, and raise the tax.
Where are you gonna make it up?
That's the question, I'm, I don't know. Uh, I don't think any of us know yet, but I think it's long time that we consider, uh, increasing the senior exemption. And we'll talk about the veterans too, but right now, I'm talking about the senior exemption, we have a large population of West Wallack. Um, and, uh, tax rates are, are hurting everybody, but it's particularly, uh, harmful to the seniors that typically live on a fixed income. And again, we're giving, as far as I can see, the lowest in the state.
Okay, so what I think you need to do is look at veterans at the same time. I understand you, you're concerned with seniors, but just so we know what type of playing field we're gonna be talking about. You can adjust one and then make all these changes, then adjust veterans, and then wait a minute, we gotta go back and adjust that. I think we wanna know how many veterans we have.
A lot of seniors are veterans too.
Yeah.
Right?
So I, I say, get all of those figures together first, then, yeah, then go through which direction we, you think we're gonna go.
Eight hundred and fifty, eight hundred and fifty veterans that are taking advantage of the exemption at West Wallack. My guess is.
Half of the seniors.
At least, yeah, at least. Uh, so they would, they would benefit from it also. Uh, I, I've got on the table right now, the seniors. You wanna bring on the table the veterans?
Well, I'm just saying for the ease of, of talking about them all at once.
Yeah, that's, well, I don't know if we should, but if you want to, that's, that's up to you.
Well, adding up all the dollars is what I'm saying, say, hey, look, if we're gonna give seniors, uh, twenty five dollars a year, just a hypothetical figure, we know how much we've gotta make up. If we're gonna raise the same for, for veterans, we'll know how much we've gotta make up. Add those two together, then we can make the necessarily, necessary adjustments.
Okay, then, again, that's if you wanna put the veterans on the table, I mean, again, I have no objection to that.
I talk, I agree with you a hundred percent, take care of, uh, the seniors, they can't afford it. Um, I, I spoke to a couple, uh, just recently where someone in pension and it don't, doesn't go to a couple, it goes to a lot, some people right in this room, where when they retired, their pensions were nine hundred dollars a month. Eight hundred dollars a month, they waited till they were sixty five, some waited till seventy. Um, their taxes are six thousand dollars a, um, a year. So if they're an average person that's making eight hun- a thousand dollars a month, half of that is going towards taxes. That's not counting what they're getting taxed on, that's not counting their medical, their Medicaid, that's not counting their prescriptions.
I, I'd like to throw one other thing into the mix, sorry to complicate this more, but disabled veterans, I was having a conversation with a neighbor the other day, are even in a worse fix.
Yeah.
You know, folks who have made the ultimate sacrifice, and sacrificed their, their bodies for us, and now they're, they're left in a debilitating condition, in my opinion, deserve a little more.
Yeah, there's, uh, one hundred percent disabled. We've got, um, in this town that are applying for the exemption, thirty three.
Yeah.
Uh, widows of veterans, we've got, uh, three hundred and three. There's other, you know, other, other categories too. Star, what is the star, Christine?
That's the, um, gold star, the women lost their child in the war.
Okay, right, uh, there is four of those.
Refresh my memory of, of what we decided last time. Only one person in a household can take the senior, but everybody can take, everybody can, you can have two veterans.
Right, right.
And take a senior.
It's not that we decided that, it's just the way it is, yeah.
The senior exemption goes with the household.
Okay.
Where the veteran is the individual.
Okay.
Um.
I'm just.
Again, I don't, any objection, I mean, I, I'm, I'm bringing, you know, uh, uh, anybody here, if they, if they wanna include this in the mix, fine, I think it's gonna be difficult enough, just the seniors, but my priority is the, the seniors on.
No, it's important to talk, then, talk about numbers, because the numbers are gonna have a direct effect on the other tax rates, but just, just my opinion, I like seeing it attached to a, um, da, um, a val- an evaluation dollar amount as opposed to a fixed dollar amount, because it kinda makes it so that you don't have to keep going back to it year after year, it kinda rides the tax rate that's going on. So, for example, right now, we have a fixed dollar for seniors of one seventy, which just translates to six thousand five hundred and forty eight dollars.
And when it was put, when it was put in place, they could've did the math where it would equal ten or twelve thousand, but over the years.
Wouldn't be average.
So what I would prefer, I, I would prefer to see us do what Warwick does and have a ten thousand dollar write-off for seniors.
Assess value based upon that fixed rate, so that would be an average.
I would, I would agree, I would, yes, it would.
You'd never have to adjust it again.
Because you won't have to adjust it, because if you're giving them a ten thousand dollar exemption on the taxes, if then taxes go forty dollars.
Christine, weigh in if you, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ed.
Okay. The one seventy is, like, when he was just saying was whatever it was, the dollar amount, the six thousand change, that that's not, that's average, that's not average, because.
That's how we came up with that six thousand change, he took the one seventy and took the average, he took the average
Yeah.
Value of, of a single family home.
Yeah, so as our tax rate goes up, that one seventy becomes less and less and less. So if we fix it to a write-off, then as our tax rate goes up over the years, that dollar amount keeps going up over the years.
As the assessment changes.
Yeah.
Uh, there's more value, the tax rate changes, there's more value to that, uh, uh, ten thousand.
But just, you know.
That's why the other towns probably do it that way.
Yeah, but just to move the conversation forward, I, I really think we should be at ten thousand minimum for our seniors. I mean, personally, I don't mind working a little harder so that my grandparents can have a little bit more. That, that's just my personal philosophy in this, and I think that right now, the one seventy doesn't have any effect, doesn't relate to two thousand sixteen bills, or what, you know, like Angelo was saying, what our seniors expenses currently are, I just, that's peanuts, that's like going out to dinner twice.
So, so if it was ten thousand, David, I mean, if, if single family, or.
They would see.
It would be two hundred and fifty seven dollars.
Somewhere, yeah.
Rather than a hundred and seventy.
And then if the tax rate goes up to thirty dollars, you would take it from there, it'd be three hundred dollars.
Keep in mind, I mean, where.
I just wanna throw something up there, you, you threw out a number earlier, if you did something like that, you came up with a price of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or somewhere around there, it cost us per year?
Um.
Now, we're on the eleventh hour of this budget.
Exactly.
So now, I just wanna know where you wanna cut the quarter million dollars out of the budget.
Yeah, well, I, I would suggest, first of all, there's, there's one number we're still waiting on, and that is the, um, the value, the, the assessed value for the motor vehicles. Now, we would anticipate that to go up, because car sales have been up, people have been buying more cars this past year. So that might change, we, and we would anticipate that number to go up, we don't know by how much. So what I would suggest is that over the next week or so, um, we'll know that number, and that way we can say, based upon that, because we can't touch that rate, that tax rate that's set by state law. Um, so we could say right away, well, then we have X more than we anticipated, because we're basing currently this spreadsheet off of last year's numbers, because that's what we have right now.
Yeah, exactly, I could, I don't have twenty sixteen yet, but, but that's, that, so I don't have the new assessments in here, guys. Um, but David, that's, we would only need that two hundred and eighty three if we doubled it. We're not saying we're gonna double it. If we bring it to, uh, ten thousand credit, that would be, if this tax rate is equivalent, two hundred and fifty seven. So we're already giving a hundred and seventy, so if, if we were to, to double it, it would be three hundred and forty. So we're actually talking a lot less than doubling.
So around three hundred thousand.
No, I think it's probably more like, gonna be more like a couple of hundred that you're gonna need, guessing, give or take a, a little bit. That you would need, but Christine. Christine, cause I don't have the two sixteen, you're gonna, you're gonna give me the two sixteen fairly soon, I guess, as soon as you get it?
As soon as it's, uh, I've tested it. It's not, it hasn't, we're not, not close.
All right, so. What's the anticipated time you'll have it?
Uh, when I'm done testing it?
Yeah.
I think I, I should be done testing.
I'm not rushing you, just, whatever it is, it is, you know?
Yes, well, it'll, a week?
Well, again, and, and that's, and that's the other key, is, like Fred just said, we have a lot of numbers still in the works. So, I mean, we can continue this conversation over the next two weeks, and then we're meeting again in two weeks.
What's that timeline for the state?
Twenty six, the deadline for the state is.
We have until the first Monday in May, but you have to, we need to have a council meeting that actually approves that this is gonna be the document that's presented. That's why we picked the twenty sixth, unless you might have a special meeting or. That's why we picked the 26th, unless you might have a special meeting or an emergency meeting after that prior to Monday.
That term, yeah. Because I'm sure there'll be changes.
But I think we have a sense now of what you're looking for, and so, once the numbers come in, we can, you know, run those scenarios and get them out to everybody. You could take a look at it ahead of that meeting, just so you have a feel for, you know, where everything's going to fall.
And just a note on that, the public hearings for the revale just ended on Friday as well. So Christine and I have been working very hard over the last couple of days to get those values into the system to be able to give you what we gave you tonight because of the fact that those hearings did just end. So that was something that did create a little bit of a delay for us because we wanted an opportunity for those hearings to occur and have to see what those numbers, what the numbers were, came as a result of those hearings.
A lot of taxpayers, not, you know, but a lot of taxpayers have been, a lot of taxpayers have been calling and asking, even though it's past the deadline, they're saying, oh, I just opened a letter, could you please, you don't hear me? And so the revaluation company has been working hard to try to get those people so they are heard, so that if there is an error, it can be corrected. So they really were, at the last minute, they were just getting filled up and making, you know, so they didn't want to release the information early because they knew there were still taxpayers that really wanted to be heard and really felt like there was something that needed to be looked at. Because this wasn't the revaluation where they went into all the homes, it was statistical. So if there was an error on the card, it wasn't necessarily caught because not all homes were gone into this time.
You know, another thing, why do we keep paying all this kind of big money? It used to be every 10 years, we used to go through this. Now we're going through it every three years, and we're paying tens of thousands of dollars to have these reeval...
Maybe.
What?
Could it possibly change?
There's a proposal to change that from every three-year statistic.
I thought we didn't have to do it.
No, we do, right now, by state law, but there's a proposal at the legislature right now to go five and 15. But right now, it's three and nine, so it's statistical every three years and a full every nine. The proposals for statistical every five and a full every 15, there's a lot of pushback against that, saying it's too long of a wait. The, what's it, the Rhode Island Center for, was it the taxpayer group there, is against it, the 15-year? They're working on a compromise. We'll see if it gets anywhere, so it might end up being every four in some, in an earlier full evaluation, but that's still in the process.
Well, it all depends, like, if you get hit, if you get hit, you can affect where your house is valued very high, and all of a sudden, you've got to wait five years for a revaluation.
Right.
You know, it works out great for the guy who got lucky that year and got a low evaluation and then goes five years, so it's, it's one of those, it's a shock. Yeah.
Or people put in the new kitchen, you know, right after the full revale's done, and now they can go another 15 years without seeing that, and now it's an old kitchen.
It's been older than you.
And then when you're catching, say, hey, it's 15 years old.
Lost all its value.
All right, anybody have any other discussion on the budget? Any public discussion on the budget itself? Just state your email address for the question.
Name's Dave Pimentel, 45, Woodside Avenue. I just heard that they're hiring an assistant chief of the town of West Wallack. Is that true?
That's in the budget.
It's in the budget, for what reason?
Chief, you want to come up? Or do you want the town manager? Discuss that.
Because the thing I have, my problem is, you guys came to us and asked for to give us, give us stuff back, and not just me, it's a lot of other people that have to get stuff back when we retired. And now, all of a sudden, I heard it's like 100 something, what, $125,000 is going to cross the town for an assistant chief. And chief, nothing against you, but my problem is, he's been gone before when working and never hired even a battalion chief to come back to fill his position, and now, all of a sudden, we need an assistant chief. And supposedly, I heard that was for grants, and we also...
He can explain everything that he... Yeah, can I just say also that it's not all of a sudden? This is probably the fourth year that it's been requested. We went through the five-year plan, we said no a couple of years, and then last year, again, we turned him down again last year with the promise that we would do it this year. So it's not all of a sudden, this has been going on for at least four years, if not longer, probably longer than that. And we felt that this was the right time to do it.
Chief Ferris has been here eight years, and I think after the first year, he's been asking for that position, so it was actually, but he has to put it in.
But correct me if I'm wrong, chief, you have been on vacation and never hired a battalion chief, am I correct on that? You had four battalion chiefs that you could have put in?
Talk this way.
All right, you could have put in four battalion chiefs into that position when he had left, and I know for a fact that he hasn't.
David, it doesn't have anything to do with when I'm away, it's the whole process of the organization. We have a 73-person department. The fire service has expanded. We talked about grants, EMA, training, the job has changed. We need, we need that, we need to train our officers better once they get promoted. There's multiple, multiple tasks that need to be done in the service today. And a battalion chief does not, you know how the shift schedules work, they're not administrative, they're not, they're not there every day to oversee some operations besides the administrative part of it. It's just got to a point where it's time. And the size of this department, and busy as this department is, it's well overdue.
Why, when you say that, you say that they have no responsibility, they got, they got a lot of responsibility, chief, when it becomes a battalion chief.
Don't, don't mix my words.
All right, well, when...
Administrative.
Administrative, all right. Did Frankie ever fill in?
Yes.
Okay, that's administrative. Do you have, you have people there?
Guys, we don't want to get into the beat.
But you have, you have people there that, that do EMS? You have training officers?
David, David, address the council if you have questions for the chief, that's your office. You have to address the council.
My thing is, like, you asked us to give up stuff for my pension, and I just can't see hiring a battalion chief when the town is, the fire department's been running good, you have people there that do EMS, you have people there that do the training, we don't hire all the time, and that's the only time they really did a lot of training is when they hired a private. As far as what he said, to train their officers, you take a test, whoever comes out on top is the guy that gets the position. I think by taking the test, he's qualified. And what I want else to get back to is the two-family, like you were talking. I bought a two-family so that we're there, it wouldn't be so hard on myself and my family for a mortgage. But now you guys are going to raise the taxes on a two-family, and how much, like he said, how much is going to go up? When I go to sell, I'm not going to be able to sell it, because it's going to be too high. You know, you talk about...
Well, David, one thing I will say, two-family now, non-owner occupied, is much higher than two-family owner-occupied.
Do you live there?
I did the same thing you did.
Yes, I live there.
I did, I did the same thing you did. I moved into this town at 19 years old, bought my house off my grandmother's estate, and I need, you know, I'm making $7 an hour, I needed a second family to supplement me to have a place to live. And it's still owner-occupied, my father lives there today. And I'm sitting here saying, you know, he's on a fixed income, I know what he makes a month, and I know what he pays a month, and I could tell you that you pretty much put five generations of my family out of that vicinity, because it's going to be tough, you know?
No, it is.
And I'm even looking at my single-family, you know, $7,000 a year is, you know, when I, when I first built the house in '03, it was $4,800 a year, and here we are, going up to 2016, and I'm at $7,000 a year, you know? And when we talk about pay raises and all that, my income hasn't drastically gone up that much.
I know, it helps with the mortgage when you pay it, but now that I don't have any more mortgage, it's money in my pocket, but now you want to take it because it's a rental property. You know what I mean? It's just, it's not right. I don't think it's right. And as far as, you know, the chief goes, I don't think you should hire one, they're doing fine the way they are. That's all I get to say.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to bring up one point with respect to that position and others that we've talked about here in the past. The five-year plan, we have been tracking at least a million dollars lower than the five-year plan every year of this plan so far, including what's proposed right now with that position, we're a million dollars less than what was written in that five-year plan when we made all those negotiations. And those numbers were driven largely by the state that made suggestions for adding positions so that we can get up to an operable level that is sufficient for a town of our size, because they saw a lot of issues with our staffing. So, just so you know, right now, the way the budget's set currently, we're over a million dollars less on the town side than the five-year plan, and we were a lot more than a million dollars less the last two years because we were supposed to be running $2 million deficits, deficits, and we did not. So just know that whenever something like this comes up, we find it and we make it work, and we find ways to make it work. So it's not, we're not spending outside of what we sat down and agreed to, in fact, we're spending a lot less.
And I just want to clarify, you know, it's amazing, I've heard a lot of complaint about the assistant chief, but that's not the only position that we're looking at hiring in the town. We're looking at the assistant chief, assistant to the DPW, open the library, longer hours, a full-time, a part-time to full-time dog officer. I think these positions are, what is it? An additional maintenance person? So, I mean, these, these positions aren't to hurt the town, these are all to help the town. You know, you look at, you know, I brought up to Chief Silver, the dog officer went, I think, three years by herself, one person, trying to run that entire department with the assistance of the police department, obviously, but we burnt that individual out. We, you know, why, other people had other people to back them up, there was nobody to back up that individual, we burnt that individual out. We brought a part-timer in last year, and then chief brought it this year to a full-time position, you know, and we could see why they need it, you know? If anybody's gotten, I've gotten calls about the dog officer and how people need help and, you know, the DPW, you know, Dave Lombari, Paul, give me one second. The DPW, Dave Lombari, last year in February, I think we burnt him out. He was by March very disgruntled, but he wasn't disgruntled because he hated his job, he was just burnt out from the snow. You know, we looked at bringing Pox and Rec over with DPW and giving an assistant, so that we're there, when we have these bad months of snowstorms, and knock on wood, we had a pretty decent year, the storms were spread out. But when we have those bad times and, you know, Dave's gone home, there's somebody there to assist him, whoever that may be. The library, if anybody, it's in my ward, if anybody heard it the most about that library being closed, I didn't hear it from just residents of this town, I heard it from people who come from West Greenwich, Coventry, who don't even go to the Coventry Library, they come to Champlin Library for the job program on Monday night, you know, and they're like, wow, you're closing the library, it's very useful there. And, you know, we've had a plan for the past couple of years, and the libraries come up to us and said, you know, we, we understand, but we want to phase it back to getting open, was it 56 hours a week? Something like that. So, I mean, everything that we're doing, last year, we added an HR director, I think that was a positive impact on the town. Full-time town planner who has been working with the redevelopment commission here in Otter, and spending a lot of time working with developments coming up on North Pleasant Street, developments that are looking to come on Harris Avenue again, you know, he's spending a lot of time doing that, and it's only for the betterment of the town. And David, let's not forget that also was recommended by the state, too, that was one of the things. We had torn apart over the last 10, 20 years because of budget cuts and everything, the management of the, of town. And I agree with you 100%, we're not just putting these people on Lucy Coosy, I mean, we're, we're studying it, and we, we believe that this is going to improve the efficiency of the town and the services for the town and just make it a better place. And a lot of, a lot of the credit goes to our department heads and our town manager. We are so far ahead of where we were just a few years ago of what this town is doing. And I know all these, all you guys up here brag about it often, I mean, this town is really doing so much better in the last few years, and I hope to continue it, but we're not going to just stand still, and if we see where there should be another position like the chiefs or the HR or the town planner or whatever, we're going to look at it, and if it makes sense, we're going to put it in. We're not doing it for ourselves, I don't think we're getting any points for it, but we're doing it for the taxpayers who've put us here to try to run this town the best way we see, and we're here, we hear about it, we talk to the manager, and it's, it's not without any thought that we put on an additional person, because we know it costs money. Sorry.
That's to reduce blood pressure.
Yeah, yeah. I hear it, though, that's, that's the thing, I do hear it. Let me just turn it off, sorry, everybody. There you go.
If I can say too, Ed, just to add to what you're saying, that we're in a better position today for the sacrifices that employees and pensioners made, along with smart business, with smart business moves that we've made, whittling down from, whittling down from 29 or 30 healthcare plans to two or three, but also in conjunction with the sacrifices that pensioners made.
Paul Petrucci, owner of Valley Fuel and Wallack Oil in Main Street in West Wallack. I can appreciate everything that you're saying. Anybody in this room that knows me, which almost everyone does, knows that I'm all for the betterment of this town. I think the problem that some people are having here, I think your timing is very bad. You want to talk about sacrificing, you want to talk about wearing people out and killing people, a dog officer? Myself and David Pimentel and many guys like us worked for many years, one man on a firetruck. We worked very hard through our union and very hard all alone, while you had three men on a garbage truck, which I was all for, I was going to fires all alone, so was David Pimentel and many, many people like us. We're in the middle of a five-year plan. I'm not saying don't hire or hire an assistant chief, which we, we didn't need for many years, and I still believe we don't now. What I'm saying is, if you people are coming up with all this money for HR people and assistant chiefs and everything else you're talking about, how about giving me my collar back? How about, let's cut this five-year plan in half, and if you've got all this money, how about putting it into the pension? How about doing all the things that we're supposed to be doing here to put this town back on track? All these people are good things, don't get me wrong, but at the right time. I mean, we're in the middle of a five-year plan here. Where are you getting all this money from? If, if you're coming in a million under, how about, how about putting that money towards the five-year plan and giving us our money back?
Well, that million under is money that we're not in the hole, so that we will be able to address those issues.
I understand that, Fred.
And Paul, all these, the HR position was mandated by the state as part of the agreement, as well as several of the other positions, they stated these offices were understaffed, they built it in, they had us build it into the five-year plan, we are complying with the five-year plan, and we're doing better than the five-year plan.
And that's great, that's great, but you found $80,000 for an HR director, right?
We had, that was in the plan.
With benefits, I think you're going to find, you're going to find over $100,000 for an assistant chief, right?
All, everything, the benefits and all, were built into the plan.
It's not about hiring these people, I think your timing is really poor, and that's what, that's what's really getting a lot of people mad here.
Any other public comment on the budget? There are none? Can I, David, can I just say one other thing? Just want to remind, yeah, I just want to remind everybody that all of our budget hearings have been taped, okay? So all the testimony is being taped and stored forever, so if you want to know reasoning behind any of these things, everything was open, public was invited to come here, advertised it, so review the tapes if you like, we'd be happy to answer any questions, but if you want to hear firsthand, review the tapes, everything was there, the reasoning for doing things or not doing things.